Six thirty. We'll start the meeting. We'll call a meeting order, please. Roll call.
Schnellie.
Here.
Vino.
Here.
Moleson.
Here.
Smithback.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Holda.
Here.
Van Kampen.
Here.
And Nelson is out tonight.
Thank you. Move on. Approval minutes. Do we have approval for the minutes of September fourth, two thousand twenty-five? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to public appearances, item four A. This agenda item allows the commission to receive information and to ask questions of a presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information. Commission members may discuss procedural matters relating to the information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff or placed on a future commission agenda. However, commission members may not expand their discussion beyond such procedural matters. Fifteen minutes are allowed for this. Yeah, anybody have anything other than what's on the agenda that they want to speak about? Thank you. We'll move on. Appreciate it. No unfinished business. Item seven A, new business. Public hearing to consider a recommendation to the village board on proposed revised GDP plan for Main Street Senior Living Development at three fifty-four North Main Street. The applicant is Oregon Property Investment, Inc. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Staff, report.
All right, let me get to staff report. All right, so I'll kind of give some background on this, and this is related to items seven A, B, and C, which are all properties owned by Oregon Property Investment. This is the property formerly known as the Oregon Manor, was Oregon Health and Rehab, probably since maybe twenty twenty up until last year. So we've discussed this, I think, conceptually before a couple of times with you all, but this is a conversion of the former nursing home and assisted living facility to an independent living facility for seniors. So no medical facility or services here. So just apartments ranging kind of between a studio and a one-bedroom apartment. The number's gone down a little bit. It's around forty-one dwelling units, just because there's going to be some conversion of smaller rooms into into one kind of one-bedroom apartment versus a studio. So knocking down some walls and total number of units going down. The reason for the GDP, the zoning change here, so backing up a little bit, our comprehensive plan shows these properties, since they're all under the same ownership group, and were formerly associated with that nursing home and assisted living, they're all institutional for the long-range plan, the future land use map, and the corresponding zoning district for that is institutional. So the senior living use is still allowed under institutional. There's various categories ranging from basically a nursing home facility all the way to independent care. So there's multiple uses under each of those, and they have their different parking requirements and things like that, but this still falls under that institutional use. This has been a property, obviously, it's been around the village a long time. There's been a lot of additions and remodels, and there's been plans to do additions or remodels and things that didn't happen, and we did a deep dive in the property files and tried to just sort of make sense of what actually was approved, whatever actually really happened here, and decided that probably the cleanest thing to do would be make sure this is up into our current code and do a planned development with that institutional zoning as the underlying zoning district. So there's a couple of exceptions they're asking for for these different properties, largely focused on setbacks. Again, these buildings are existing, so they're kind of, they are where they are, but just taking a look at where institutional zoning has for, you know, rear yard, front yard setbacks and calling in where the the buildings are. Density, you know, noting that there's going to be forty-one units in this larger building. So the three GDPs are really for these three different properties. So one is the main larger building. One is the office building, which is on the corner of Soden and Lincoln, and that'll have that shared parking lot that we looked at last time. They do have a shared access agreement that they've put in place for all the parking lots, just in case properties change hands or anything, that that parking is guaranteed to support the the senior living use. And then the other property is the single-family house on North Main Street, the white two-story, single-family house. So at the moment, that's, I believe, just going to be vacant. They understand that that use needs to be connected to the Main Street Senior Living facility, and if not, then if it was going to be used for, just say, a normal, single-family rental, we would need to do a comprehensive plan amendment to align that with more of a single-family or two-family zoning district. So that's kind of a high-level overview. I know Tim's here, been working closely with the owners and can share some more details about, you know, operations as well as some of the the plans here for changes to the exterior and some of the stormwater. We are holding the SIP, the Site Plan Step, and the CSM to combine the lots until probably the November meeting. There's a stormwater management plan for the area just south of that larger parking lot off Soden that Lauren and her team are still reviewing, and we're still waiting on kind of updated version for that. So we wanted to make sure that there weren't any plans, that stormwater plan that would affect site layout or anything like that. So that'll be coming at a future meeting, but that's kind of the Reader's Digest version of what's going on over here.
Any comments from the applicant?
Um, unless you have a question, sir.
We'll get to that. Any public comments? Anybody want to address it? If you want to come up, that's fine. Please come up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and then go ahead and give us your comments, please.
Ray McElister, I live at two oh two Burnview Street, and I got a real problem with the parking. First of all, they don't have enough parking even on their chart here, because if they're going to have forty-one people living in that forty-one rooms, there's probably going to be forty or thirty-five, at the least, cars parked out there. Then you got the people that are working there. And have you, have anybody on this board been over there at either the morning or the afternoon when this grade school gets gets on and start? You got a lot of traffic. There isn't room for it all right now, hardly. For half an hour, it's packed. People going in, picking up kids, dropping off kids, whichever. And I'm just wondering, you got that one space across the street, you say, with fourteen parking spots in it, but I know the Manor used to rent that spot land. Is that still? Is that the way it is still? Or is it, did they acquire that land?
I have to answer. We'll have an answer for you. We'll get an answer.
And, you know, Soden, all those cars that are there, you're taking the driveway. It's going to take away two to three parking spots. And go there, now, has anybody here been there in the morning or in the afternoon?
I used to live on that street. That's a long time ago.
Yeah, it's a lot different than it was twenty years ago, let me tell you.
I'm sure it is.
Because, but it's just not enough parking there for for them, for what they're talking about. And you didn't let the library build because they didn't couldn't get up to the standard of the board of the, you know, for parking. Why should this new business, it's not a, not the Manor anymore, it's a different business? Why should they get, they want to get, so that they don't have to observe that parking stuff?
All right. You got anything else, Ray? That's fine. Appreciate your comments.
Yeah, and I I watch every morning and evening, I know, kids coming and going. And then the winter time, it's really bad because the road is narrowed down by three to four foot on each side of the road with the snow. And you're, it's going to put to a point where some kid's going to get get hit by a car.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Elise, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, yeah, you can feel free to either stay up there, or I can just explain while you're getting back to your seat. But as far as the parking requirement, so this use with this independent senior living, it just requires one parking space per unit. So at the moment, they're planning forty-one units. I believe they're going to have at least forty-seven spaces. Is that right, Tim? Fifty-two spaces. So they'll be above the requirement for this use. There's not a requirement for the staff to have off-street parking, but it looks like they will have, they're going to just have a small number of staff. There will be enough spaces provided. I think due to the size of these units, there's typically just one person living in them, so, and some people don't even have a car at all, some of these other facilities that they have set up. So that's what our code requires. They're meeting that parking requirement. That's not one of the exceptions from the zoning code that they're asking for here. The lot over here to the east on East Lincoln, they do own that property, so that would be, and there's an agreement that says that that parking lot is to support the the larger building and is tied to that. So that is connected, basically, to meet that parking requirement. And then as far as the traffic, obviously, yeah, it's a busy area. I think one pro is that the folks that live here probably are not working at typical office hours and kind of everybody leaving at seven thirty AM or something. I would imagine probably most seniors, if they notice a traffic, you know, a heavier traffic time, probably wouldn't be also trying to leave at that same time on a regular basis. But obviously, just an assumption. Right, right. But as far as the parking requirements and the location, that's.
People from fifty-five on up, it says on your thing. And even if they're not working, they're going to breakfast somewhere or whatever, they're going in and out. And this is only in that part B, part A on that you're drawing. Part B is going to be done with later, right? They're not doing any of that part.
Correct. Yep, the the Main Street property, yep, that'll be the next agenda item. We'll have a separate public hearing for that.
Those are two separate hearings we'll have. For each each individual property, we've got three separate public hearings regarding that entire amount of property there.
So this is just the one for the larger building right now?
Large building.
Yeah, but that one building where the kitchen was on Soden.
Yep.
That is not being used, correct?
That is the building, is it not?
The standalone kind of former dental office building?
Not that the house, I mean, where the kitchen was and everything for the Manor.
That was all part of the original building, was it not?
Pardon?
That was all part of the original building, the main building, as far as I know.
Yeah, but that part they're not using in this.
Oh. Okay, let's get a clarification. When you say that part, the kitchen's not going to be there. I'm sure they're tearing that out and probably making apartments or something out of it.
So there's, there's a couple of different buildings. One is this main in orange, that's the main building that had the former nursing home, the former assisted living. So that whole structure inside is getting renovated to be this independent senior living. There's this standalone building here on the corner of Soden and Lincoln that's going to be agenda item seven C. That's that former, it's being used essentially as an office, so that's the plan. And then there's this North Main Street house, that standalone house too, so that's item seven B. But they're all same ownership, so related topic here.
And, well, one of the things, if they're remodeling it, also.
Yeah, they're remodeling it. Yeah, what, so?
Make a place for, to have the delivery. Now, they, you got tractor-trailers parking on on Lincoln Street.
You mean during construction? Are you referring during construction?
But, no, this is, that's what the Manor did all the time, you know, for their.
Well, but this is, the Manor's not there anymore.
Right.
We're dealing with senior housing. Once the senior housing's done, I don't, I find hard to believe there'd be any semis parked anywhere nearby.
Well, every delivery, like if they're talking, they're talking possible breakfast and meals, you know, they got to get
Not semis.
Stuff delivered, but there's no place for them to deliver off the road.
Yeah, maybe we can have the applicant speak a little bit short, what he knows about kind of the operations, how that's going to work and where they would park.
But I mean, you're taking up one because his car's parked on the side of the road.
Okay, we're, okay, we're going to have the applicant come back and and discuss this with us right right now, okay? He's here. He's right there. Yes, well, this gentleman, not not both at the same time up here, no.
Was that all your, all your comments?
That's all my comments, yeah.
And if you've got some more questions, you can come back up. That's not a problem. That's a, it's a public hearing. Whatever you have to say, as long as it's cordial.
Well, yeah, I'll try not to swear.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, please come on up and it is, so can I make a clarification? Tell us exactly what the heck you're doing again, so everybody can hear it. I I've heard it many times, but I wasn't.
It was formerly a skilled nursing and assisted living. We're converting that to fifty-five and older market-rate, single apartments. Some of them are studios, some of them are single bedrooms. The kitchen will be utilized. It will provide convenience meals, and there'll be one convenient staff there twenty-four seven.
Okay. So is his concern that possibly you'll have delivery trucks? You have some kind of a plan for that?
Other than them just being a delivery truck, like an Amazon truck would be a delivery truck or?
Well, you got to deliver food, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, right. And they'll just probably come to the front.
Okay. To the front. Of me, and if 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 Oregon Manor had that occurring before, it's not, nothing's really changed, except that I suspect that the the size of the vehicles are going to go down.
Why isn't it changing? This is a different business.
Okay, we're going to, here's how we're going to do this. He's going to make his comments, you can come back up and ask me. We're going to have this on the on the microphone, so it's recorded, okay?
Okay.
All right. So that's how we're going to handle it. So the kitchen will be convenience, so hamburgers.
It's a very limited menu.
Limited menu, is it going to be, it's going to be available twenty-four seven or or just?
No, sir, just at meals.
Just the meal times. And it's not going to be, the idea is not to provide meals for all residents. Is that right or no?
No, because it's it's a fifty-five and older, they have a lot of different plans, so it's not going to be, everyone's not going to be taking advantage of that.
Got it.
They do have small kitchenettes in their units. It's just that they're not full kitchens, so they wanted the opportunity to have a full meal.
Okay, okay. All right. You may come back. You want to come back up and talk to us again, Ray?
Well, you know.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't mean to be ornery, but you got to come up, please. Thank you. I used to, I used to be your neighbor a long time ago. My dog messed up the whole front of your house thirty years, forty years ago.
Well, you know, it's if they're going to have stuff delivered there, they're going to have to have a place to get it done. And they shouldn't be parking them semis in the road.
Okay.
Taking up one whole lane. And that that street is busy now, and it's going to get busier, Lincoln Street.
Okay. I I don't disagree with you on that. However, I would hope that we're not blocking any traffic. I'm sure that we will not allow that. So there have to be some kind of a loading zone, et cetera, that's available to them, and I'm sure they'll do something to that effect, and our engineering staff will make sure that they, and our and our police department will make sure that's taken care of. So it should not be blocking traffic, okay?
Okay.
If it is, you're going to let us know.
I will.
I know you will. Thank you. Thank you for your input. Any other public comments? Absolutely, absolutely. That's where we're here.
Hi, Kerita Funk, three oh four North Main Street, so just a little ways down from this. I am curious as to the size of the studio units. I remember being in the Manor, and those were the skilled nursing care rooms, and it boggles my mind thinking of those as studio apartments. So I'm curious as to the size.
Okay, okay. I think that we could have them come up, but okay, Elise's got them up on the screen there. They are doing a major modification to the interior, so it's not going to be the size of the rooms that were there. Okay, obviously, it's have studios and some one-bedroom apartments, so they're not going to be large, but I'm sure they'll be accommodating, so.
Tim, is there anything else you wanted to add to the?
Yeah, yeah.
You could just stay up front, maybe. Front row.
It looks like the smaller ones are about three hundred and seventy-five square feet, down to two hundred and sixty-three square feet. They're relatively small.
They are small.
Yeah, and that's kind of based on the market research that was done by the ownership. That's kind of what a population is looking for, is something that's easy to clean, easy to kind of reside in, and that's why, again, the meal package will be provided as well.
Anybody else? Questions?
I do, if we're done with the public hearing.
Not yet. Anybody else in the public? Nothing else? All right, we are going to close the public hearing. Go ahead, and we're going to talk.
So my understanding is that some of the constructions have already been done. Can you tell me percentage-wise, how much has been renovated already?
I'll tell you that the two-story building has been cosmetically refurbished, and that's the only portion that's been done.
Nothing in the interior?
Oh, the interior of the of that two-story, yeah, has been, yeah, the cosmetics of that, yep.
Okay, so fifty percent of the project, would you say?
Yeah, actually roughly that, about twenty rooms, yep.
Okay. I don't have a problem with your project, but I read through the memo, and there are a lot of mistakes in the memo, which really disturbs me. It's hard to have confidence with these, so I'd like to go through these and
Sure.
hear your reaction if I'm reading it wrong.
Okay.
Okay, so if we could bring up that memo, page eighteen of the packet, and we scroll down to item five, and we talk about the cardinal directions, northeast, south, and west. Those are all incorrect from what I read.
Okay.
Now, that could be a simple oversight. Okay, I understand that, but right away, that caught my attention.
Okay.
Okay. Now, let's go down to item seven, where we have proposed project in the right column. You have thirty-three thousand square feet. According to the survey, there's sixty-one thousand square feet. Is that a simple oversight?
It must be.
Okay. Then if we go down, we talk about item eight, forty-one units. It's now been revised from forty-seven to forty-one, okay. The proposed project will have forty-one units per acre. According to Elise's memo, it's thirty units per acre.
Right, I was under the, I guess, the belief that we were be combining these tonight, but that's not what's happening.
Okay.
So that was just, that was just a calculation error on my part.
Okay.
That the CSM was going to happen tonight, but now it's not going to happen. It's going to happen potentially in November.
Okay, that helps explain a little bit. The next item is page twenty-three, item F, where you're requesting a setback of ten feet on the side yard, but I see in Elise's memo, it's a setback of fifteen feet. So what is the desire there?
I would default to Elise.
Let's double-check, because I know it's been.
So just maybe a clarification. When I initially wrote this, we were, we didn't have the institutional, that's not what we were talking about, and then I had to revise it, so maybe I missed something in there.
We did switch. We, initially, he was referring to the MRE zoning district, and then when we kind of were taking another look at the comp plan, realized that this needs to be institutional zoning still, which this is still allowed to use under, the setbacks are a little bit different. So whatever I have in here, I know I just had to do some revisions, and we didn't have the setbacks called out for the other two properties either, so I just did those calculations on my own.
So the fifteen-foot side yard is correct, as stated in your memo here?
The street side yard, yes. Okay, yeah, I believe that's.
All right, so it sounds like there's been some back and forth.
Correct.
Okay, that that makes me feel a little better.
Okay.
Okay. I guess the last question I have for you is the parking. You say there's, there are some extra stalls now, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you have the the actual most up to date.
Well, I have fifty-two.
Okay.
Yeah. My question is, are are those stalls going to be numbered or assigned in some way? Because you talk about the, let's call it the office building, and that parking for that will be available in unassigned spaces. So my question is, how are people going to know what's unassigned?
Yeah, we probably end up signing those with a sign that these are the ones for the business. So, and that's only if we kind of offload that that office to some other person.
Right, yeah.
So currently, the plans are to run the business office for the facility out of there, so there's really no need for us to sign it until we do that with that property.
Okay. And then just looking at that parking map, I know we talked about it at the last meeting, it looks like you could easily squeeze another stall. Talking about the large, large lot at the bottom of the plan to the south. So, you know, I see a large traffic way. Is that, you want a two-way traffic there?
Well, we do want to keep it as spacious as we can, assuming that the drivers are going to be fifty-five and older. We just wanted to give everybody enough room.
Yeah.
And once we got to that fifty-two, it was an interesting conversation I had with an architect from, he's licensed in Wisconsin, but he operates out of Tennessee. And I had asked him, and he goes, we can bring that number down. I'm like, well, what are you going to do with the snow? He's like, the what? The snow, we're going to pile the snow. So, so we did want to buffer some extra, some extra room there just to put snow piles temporarily as we plowed that lot until we got the snow out of there.
Okay. I just thinking, with parking being tight.
Just add more.
I would, personally, I would add another space, and I would use that space to put the snow if necessary, but.
Yeah, we'll have a civil, a civil engineer to actually design the parking lot for the building permits, but that was the architect's rendering of it.
Okay, okay. I have an unrelated question to the applicant. It has to do with the traffic. I've had a number of people talk to me about concerns about Main and Lincoln, and people have said, especially during school times, it's a challenge, and and I know that intersection well. I live a block away, you know, I see it all the time. The question I have is, at what point, what triggers the village to act to do some control in that intersection? And what would be the potential solution for that?
Lauren, you want to start with that one?
No, just to clarify, are you talking about the Lincoln Street and Main Street intersection?
Lincoln and Main. I mean, there's also an issue at Soden with the, you know, the school traffic backing up, but it's, my concern is pedestrian crossing and accidents.
Yeah, so typically, if there were a concern, we would likely commission a a study, but an evaluation is a better word for it, of the intersection and see if it meets what's called warrants. So there's a very specific DOT list of things that you have to check off as far as, you know, history of fatalities, traffic volume, all of that stuff. And it spits out numerically, are stop signs warranted, are street, or traffic signals warranted? Now, that would probably be a first step. An intersection is not required to meet warrants to put in traffic control measures. That becomes a bit more of a policy choice, so Alpine and CC here, as an example. We did have a traffic study commissioned on that at the end of two thousand twenty-four, and the answer was that technically it did not meet warrant per Dane County's definition of it, yet the board had heard enough concern and the police department had enough concern about the safety of that intersection that we elected to move forward with designing and constructing the traffic signal out there. So I would certainly, if it was me, I would recommend going through the steps of getting the numbers first and getting that kind of engineering background of what. I would certainly, if it was me, I would recommend going through the steps of getting the numbers first and getting that kind of engineering background of what we're really doing with, but it is ultimately the choice of the community and the community leaders.
Good, okay.
Anything else?
Nope, I've got it.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I got two.
Go ahead.
One, staff. If we approve this, is it okay to put a, a condition of approval at the GDP level to say that deliveries are made at specific times, or we could request deliveries be made at specific times, for example, before eight o'clock or after five, but before ten? You know, to sort of mitigate some of the concerns of the neighbors and, and, and traffic through there when kids are coming or going to school, such, something like that?
Yeah, I'm certain that ownership would have a problem with that.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Is that something that would be done at this or at the SIP level?
Um, probably at this step, just because that's similar to conditions we would put on like a conditional use permit, which is sort of the same process. I don't know that our village attorney would say that's super enforceable, but we could definitely say, you know, our preference would be outside of those peak traffic hours for, yeah, on the other hand, if you, in the evening or mornings, we're probably going to hear from neighbors that now I'm hearing trucks and it's waking me up and that kind of thing too, so.
It's a trade-off.
It's sort of a, you know, maybe it's middle of the day or something like that, is the compromise, but...
So maybe we'd make a recommendation that you work with staff to, to get, to figure something out.
Yeah, we absolutely want to be good neighbors, so.
Yeah. And then the second thing is, again, I don't know if it's at this level or the next one, but looking at your traction closure, for a facility of this size, it seems really small.
Okay.
So I would ask that as you go through the SIP process, you take another look at that, and to Patrick's point, maybe adding a stall would be able to increase the size of that and not lose the stall?
Okay.
That's all I got.
All right, anybody else?
I just want to follow up to John's comment about deliveries, and when the gentleman Ray raised the concern, I thought, what if on Lincoln Street it was marked as delivery-only, a certain section? Because that's more, most likely where the truck is going to park, right? So, just something to consider.
I learned how to come up there.
Yeah, I can speak to this. This actually came up a couple of years ago for exactly this reason, when the Manor was in operations, and they did mark off a significant stretch of Lincoln Street in that area to no parking, so it essentially functioned as a deliveries-only lane. So that is actually still in ordinance, so it's certainly something that would be pretty simple to examine, make sure it meets the needs, but then just kind of adjust. It already exists, our police department already enforces that.
All right. Anything else? Note that you do have some additional answers, you have a recommendation for approval of GDP plan, including the flexibilities for the property listed above, so you've got five items there. Rear yard setback, flexibility, nineteen feet, et cetera, et cetera, so those will be included in the motion, so do we have a motion?
Do we take these one at a time, Elise, then, is that what?
We take one, just, just this property right now. What, you mean which?
Yeah. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the GDP for 354 North Main Street, applicant Oregon Property Investment, Inc., under a condition that delivery be worked out with traffic engineering and city staff, and that an analysis of the trash enclosure be done before the SIP process, and looking at adding another stall where I put them.
Okay, we have motion, then we have a second.
I'll second.
You have a second. Any discussion? Satisfied with that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the next item, another public hearing, item seven B, public hearing and consideration and recommendation of the village board on a proposed revised GDP plan, general development plan for the Main Street Senior Living Development at three thirty-six. Did I look at this right? Yeah, three thirty, three fifty-four, three thirty-six North Main Street, applicant again, Oregon Property Investment Incorporated. We'll do it properly, staff, comment?
So again, this is that property that is on the, it's just off the sound, but this single-family, two-story, white, uh, home, yeah, that's been the fast use for the Manor. So, and Tim can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that will just be, that's not part of the senior living, you know, facility at this moment, it will be vacant for the time being, and the ownership understands that if they did want to pursue either, you know, turning that into some kind of, you know, rental property for just a single or two-family or something like that, that would require a comprehensive plan amendment, because the only things allowed under this institutional future land use are institutional uses, so it could be converted if it's office-based, if it's maybe additional housing that's part of the facility, that would be, you know, a separate conversation, we kind of talk through the options with them, but it sounds like the focus is really to get this, the main building, you know, up and running, continue the construction project, so I think that one is sort of a on the back burner for now, but again, just kind of bring it up into the correct zoning classification and getting those setbacks called out.
All right, then we'll open a public hearing, is there any public comment? Not seeing any. We'll close the hearing.
Can I ask one question on that property?
You certainly can.
Is, is the owner going to address, it's starting to fall apart on the roof. Are they going to address that anytime soon?
Not currently under contract for that property, but I can certainly bring up your concerns to them.
Yeah, it's just very amenable to that, so. Right, I, I mean, I could see the roof is damaged, and I just hate to see it become an eyesore.
Right, and they, they, like I said, they do want to be good neighbors, and they do want to take care of all their properties and stuff, I think as soon as we get this, pass this portion, we can, we can definitely work on that.
Okay.
All right, good, thank you. So, about hopefully before, we're going to suggest before winter?
They're building, but I'm more concerned of an eyesore for the neighborhood.
Got it, okay. All right, so we need another motion recommended, village board, we have a recommendation for approval by our village planner.
So moved with the comments incorporated from our village staff.
Got it, that's for three thirty-six North Main Street. We have a motion, do you have a second? You have a second?
Who's second?
Matthew.
Matthew did.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to, on to item seven C, which is another public hearing. This is consideration, the recommendation of village board is on a proposed revised general development plan for the Main Street Senior Living Development at one fifty East Lincoln Street. Applicant again, Oregon Property Investment. Staff report again. This is the old dental building.
Correct, yeah, same situation, this building here on the site plan, you can see it off to the side here on the rendering, so my understanding, it'll be, be an office use to support the the senior living facility in the large building, so as long as it's tied to that use, it's still considered institutional, supporting that institutional use. Again, if anything would change in the future, if it changes hands, becomes some other, maybe wants to revert to a commercial business office, something like that, we would be looking at a comprehensive plan amendment.
Okay. Open a public hearing, any public comments? Your hand was coming up, Ray. Okay. No other comments? Nothing else from the plan commission? We'll close the public hearing. Moving on to discussion. Is there anything to discuss?
Village attorneys reviewed the easement and they're fine with it?
Yep, we did a, I think, one or two back and forths, and they've been signed and recorded.
This, I think they actually, this facility, when it was Oregon Manor, still used it, actually used that building as an office, did they not? That's what I thought. Okay, can we put together a motion for this?
Moved to approve general GDP for Main Street Senior Living Development, one fifty East Lincoln Street, contingent upon comments from staff.
Okay, we have motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen, everyone. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. We'll move on then to item seven D, which is review and possible recommendation of village board of a certified survey map for one sixty-nine, two oh three, two fifteen, South Main, to combine parcels for the MSP, South Main Street Senior Affordable Apartments. The applicant is MSP Real Estate, Inc.
Let me get down there. So this is the senior affordable apartments proposed, just south of the EW Health Clinic, there's one lot in between here. Okay, we're on the right, the right one here, let me pull up the CSM. I did want to note that since the packet was published, the applicant has revised the CSM per all the engineering comments, and the engineers sent us their letter approving that a couple of days ago, so they're satisfied with the changes that were made, they've met all the requirements there, but there are currently three parcels in what is shown as Lot One, so those three addresses that are listed on the agenda there, and then Lot Two would remain, the EW Health Clinic is just to the north here, off the map. There is a little notch here for the driveway, it's a gravel driveway, and it kind of, there's an easement right now where the driveway that serves Lot Two is actually on the neighboring property, so they're adjusting those property lines so that Lot Two's driveway would solely be on their their property, so just that MSP wouldn't have another property driveway on their own parcel, so that's that little kind of bite out of the parcel up here that you see. But yeah, as far as the CSM is concerned, engineering comments are met, so happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so we're going to, anybody have any questions about that?
Just for clarification, that the first house, that I believe it was the Ames House or something, that is not going to remain, correct? That's...
That would remain.
Yes.
Well, it would remain.
Yep, so that's not part of the project.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So, but there's, the owner owns these four parcels here, so kind of do a lot line adjustment along with the CSM, but, yeah, so cleaning up that driveway issue, that would remain under the private ownership. I think the hope is that that would eventually be maybe converted to some kind of commercial use that would support, you know, downtown conversion to restaurant or bookstore, whatever that might be, and then the Lot One is combining those southern three parcels into one.
Okay, so it's pretty straightforward, everything's cleaned up on it, so we need a recommendation of village board to approve a certified survey map for one sixty-nine, two oh three, and two fifteen, South Main Street, to combine the parcels. We have motion to that effect?
Still moved.
We have motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Let Matthew have it, yeah. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, that motion carries, thank you. Next item seven, E, review and possible approval of SIP plan for the South Main Street Senior Affordable Living Apartments, or Apartments, one sixty-nine, two oh three, two fifteen, South Main Street. Applicant again is MSP Real Estate, Inc.
All right, so they provided me a slideshow, I'm working on pulling that up, you guys can come on up, but this is the, you might remember again, last meeting, we did a revised GDP for parking count, but this was approved earlier this year, the zoning was approved earlier this year, I believe, in February. And then since then, MSP's been back a number of times with a lot of, you know, opportunities for feedback on the, the design of the building here, and I think they've done a good job listening to the comments. I know that you all weren't able to attend last time, but you were able to listen to the meeting and hear some of the discussions, so let you guys kind of talk about some of the changes since then, and we can just open up for questions then.
Yeah, great. Again, my name is Brian Woolsey, I'm with Ray White, Dimension for Architects, I want to thank the commission for its patience, we, I think this is our fourth meeting, plus the September meeting that we weren't at, which you guys thoughtfully gave your comments, which we studied on YouTube, and so tonight we're going to go through those comments and the changes that we've made to the plans. So maybe we could just remind you, you've already approved the CSM, so you know where we're located on South Main. These are some of the stats of the project itself, it's three stories, we've got underground parking, we have a surface lot in the back. We've got a kind of a split of ones and twos. Next slide. And so this is, this is the site plan, I think the one thing I just wanted to point out, because you guys were looking at the CSM, we will have our own driveway and, and apron, and, and that was, we, we put the property line where it is so that they could have their own, you know, driveway, and we could have our own, and we met the city's requirements for spacing, the minimum amount of spacing between driveways, so that was an important change there. Next slide, please. This is, when you're looking at the slides, I think that the, the part up on the right looks actually red, but it's actually meant to be like a cedar kind of finish, so it's, it's not quite red, it's more of a cedar tone, but this is our, our palette of materials.
With the real ones right here, if you want to see, there's a little bit of a red tone to all of that, so.
So as we said, we, we studied the, the comments that were made at the September fourth meeting, and I, I've captured them here, and I've got them in front of me, and I think, I'm going to use that kind of as a guide, so as we go through and we can kind of talk about the, the feedback that, that we received in September and the changes that we've made to address some of those concerns. So if we can go to the next slide, so the, the first comment was about the pergola and trellis, the comments were that the color adds interest, but the scale feels like an afterthought, consider enlarging it to make it stronger architectural statement. So I wanted to point out that the pergola on the left side is, is adjacent to a community room. I think there was some question at the last meeting of whether or not that was still a community room, it is still the community room. We did enlarge the, the cedar columns, we also added some masonry around the Main Street side, and I think those, I think that was, those were the major things that we did there. The other, the other comment that we had from this vantage point was about the gables. They reference the South Main District, but currently read as one-dimensional and flat. They should project further into space with a collar tie to support the roof. The color isn't effective, try, consider tying the gable detail into the stair color, I think that was meant like the the balconies. The dormer should be larger, a different color to protrude from the building to add more depth. And there was a number of people that commented on that, and so we, and we looked at it in a number of different ways, we looked at it, the entire size of the gable, it looked too large. We looked at it in this darker color, which is the same color as the the balconies, and it looked a little dark, and so we, we, we ended up really liking this cedar tone, and, and we did bring it off of the building to provide a bit more depth there as well, so I think that was, those were good comments, I think it's warmed up the the palette quite a bit and brought some of those other elements into, into the design. We also added that same detail to the, the front entry, and I know there was a lot of focus in earlier meetings about our front entryway, and you know, that it also felt like an afterthought, and I think with some of these details and considerations, it feels a bit more you know, significant as a front door to the building. So maybe we could go to another, there we go, that's a better, maybe rendering of that side of the building. Okay, here I'd like to talk about the patios and porches, the comments were, these need stronger integration with the neighborhood context. Columns should have more presence, particularly at the base. Consider adding massing or texture, wood or masonry in the first four feet against the street. This would feel more welcoming and add tactile detail at the human level. So I want to just talk about a couple of those things. One thing that you, you can't see here, but you, I think we'll be able to see it in one of the, maybe, can you go one, one ahead? Yeah, here. In our original design, we had, we had, we didn't have stairs immediately at the entrance to these, these first floor entries, they were, you'd kind of walk straight out, then you'd go down, you know, four or five stairs, walk somewhere, and then go down five stairs, and so as we looked at the porches along Main Street, the, the more kind of common detail was you'd have stored... the, the more kind of common detail was you'd have stairs that go right up to the patio. And so we made that adjustment where we brought, you know, the first set of stairs right up to the, the patio. As you'll see, we also enlarged the, the columns. And then at the base, the first four feet, we enlarged those as well.
It carried that up onto the second as well. Kind of the, the new old posts are kind of a continuation of the, the columns.
Yep. So now we're gonna move around the building. There's a, this is kind of the main, I mean, because it's a, a one-way street, you know, going, you know, north to south or heading south, this is kind of the main, the side you'd be turning right into the building there in front. So on this side, the comments were the interior courtyard trellis. And I think that, yep, that's a feature right there. It reads very weak. It should be more substantial, extended further toward the parking lot. Add an overhang or cantilever to strengthen the, the design. We, we liked all those comments and I think it, it adds a much more welcoming feature to the, to the project most, you know. We have a parking lot underneath, but there'll be plenty of people that are parking up the side of the building. So to enter this area, that's where we'll have our management office and our mail delivery. So it, it felt like that was a good addition to the project as well. And then if you go advance one more, there, we had the, we have two exit doors. And in the last, in the September version, you could, they were, there was shed dormers over each of them. Yeah, right there. And I think that the comment was made that these elements don't provide protection. They feel disconnected from the architecture. Recommend redesigning them to integrate more meaningfully with the overall design. And, you know, they were, when, and when we went back to it, they're really not, it's not a feature that people are gonna be going into. It's kind of like a way for people to get out. And so we, instead of like highlighting them, we painted them a color to make them more, like kind of go away so that they're not like featured. So.
I think you covered everything, but we can answer any questions. And again, we have the real materials right here, if you want to see those. Go ahead, guys.
I'll start. Thank you for listening. I think that it is a better project. I, I know that there's a balance that has to be struck. I've sat on your side of a table many times myself and, and realized the battles that go on outside of these four walls. So I get it and I appreciate what you did. And I think that it's a better project because of it. So I, I support it and I think you've done a nice job as well as we can be expecting right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Patrick?
I somewhat agree with John's sentiment. I'm not gonna be as kind. I do thank you for listening. I think your project's come a long way. I do support your project. I think it, it, it will be a nice addition. I just, early on, you heard both John and I say, you need to be sensitive to the neighborhood. And I don't think you've accomplished that yet. You're close, you're getting closer. I appreciate the gable end trusses pulled out. What I don't understand is why you want, why you have a dark staircase and the, and the cedar gable end truss. They just don't work together. Why not the same color? Unify it rather than separate it. So, you know, you got a lot of cooks in the kitchen. I can't tell you what to do, but that's my reaction. So that's number one. Number two, when I look at the, let's say it's the north elevation. So it'd be looking from Main Street as you're traveling south. That's it right there. My reaction to the windows is it looks like a hotel window. It's, it's a very modern opening. There's really, there's no sill, there's not much wraparound. Now, when I look, and, and maybe it's the date of this rendering, when I looked at your interior courtyard, I'm starting to see more trim wrapped around. I'm seeing a sill. So it could just be the rendering, but that concerns me. That opening is not, those windows do not work with any of the architecture that's around, all the houses around. So it's hard to tell because we don't have an elevation. We've got a rendering, what's exactly going on there? But that's a concern I have. Then my last concern is the vertical tongue and groove siding. I mentioned early on that this is a tall building. It's coming up against a neighborhood of two, two, one and two-story structures. That is not helping you reduce the height. That's sending these vertical lines, making it look tall. The other materials, I don't have an objection to, but that's the one area of concern that I have. So for those reasons, I don't support your project at this point. Because I think we, it truly needs to be sensitive to that neighborhood. You're getting close, but it's not there for me yet.
Okay. Everybody else?
I agree with a lot of that. I think it's a fine project. I don't like it on this site. I don't, it just doesn't feel like the neighborhood and it doesn't connect to downtown. I, I get the motel, hotel kind of vibe from it, but.
Only because of those, because of that north exposure?
The courtyard side especially, to me feels like what you'd pull up to in a motel. But we don't see that. I'm not as concerned about that.
You're not gonna see that from the street, no?
That's, I don't have as many details, but that's, that's my impression of the, the project. I think you could put it on the BMO Bank site and it would be just fine. Or anywhere around town, it'd be fine. But right here, it doesn't really work for me.
Interesting. Scott, any comments?
Nothing right now.
Okay, Matthew?
I mean, I mean, this isn't a deal breaker or anything with like the gables. Like the cross beam seems like it's like up, whereas to me it seems like it'd be more like down at the, along the base of the gable. If that makes sense to you.
Oh, I see.
So it's what jumped out at me, especially from like the, along the street side elevation.
Okay, okay. Mr. Architect? Nothing yet, no comments? Okay. So we got a bunch of mixed emotions on here, so let's see where we're gonna go with this thing.
I guess, was there anything related to the window sills and some of those material details that maybe weren't showing up well on the rendering that you wanted to respond to?
The, the sills and masonry, we would have a, a, like a precast sill at the bottom of the window. And then those in the siding would have a, a casing trim around them. And one of the things, when we did look at the photos of the context of the houses in, in some of the neighboring buildings, you know, they're, some were very plain. Didn't have a lot of detail. Some had a lot of very crafted elements in the gable, which, as many of us know, unfortunately, some of that craft is lost a little bit in, in the trades right now. But there, there was kind of a surprising number of the houses were, I, I don't want to say it a bad way, but it kind of plain and, and didn't have a lot of historic detail. So it's just kind of trying to find that balance of not wanting to emulate one thing. You know, there might be one house that had some really nice details. So just trying to find that balance of something, but without copying one specific house. But there, there was a kind of a combination of things. And again, a little surprised that a lot of the houses didn't have a lot of very ornate, not a lot of Victorian, you know, type of detailing in the immediate surrounding. Some, but a, a limited amount. So then the challenge becomes if you pick up one element from one house, then it becomes too much like that one. And so again, just trying to find that balance of an appropriate amount of detail that can be done with today's level of craftsmanship and materials. Okay, I, frankly, I don't have a real problem with the project. I don't. Here's some of your comments, guys. Eric? The one thing I like about the, well, I shouldn't say one thing, it's, it's a nice project. One of the things I do like about the fact that we have some housing that's gonna be down in the downtown area, supporting downtown businesses at a walking distance at the most. And it's, it's a good use of that property down there. It'll help us out, I think. And it keep invigorating. Our, our downtown's starting to come around pretty nice right now from what I can see.
If I could, just to a couple of these comments, you know, we did, we did study, Matthew, the, the idea of bringing that, that trellis design, excuse me, the, the gable design down. In our opinion, it looked too big. It, you know, that's already sixteen feet across. And so when you bring it down, we just thought it made it too big for the, for the project itself. We did look at that. Patrick, you, at, at the September meeting, you, you expressed that you liked the, the color of the, of the balconies. And so we played with that, e- especially in the gable design. We just didn't like that color up there. And when we, so, you know, some of this comes down to, to I think, personal taste. When we looked at the entrance to, to the building and to the trellis and then to the, to the entrance to the back of the building, we did all that in, in cedar. So we tried to do like kind of special elements as in cedar and do some of these other elements that repeat in that, in this.
Hardy trim.
In the other color. You know, as the, the vertical parts, again, I mean, it's a material we like. We, we think it's an attractive look to the building. I, you know, and a lot of these conversations about the colors, unless you guys are gonna tell us, you know, do this color, we're a little guessing as to what, what the committee is gonna like. We think it's a very handsome building. We think it's, it's a, it's a nice complement of, of, of colors and organi- organization. And I, I think it's really an attractive, handsome design.
Okay. I think our hangup is on this side of the table that, and, and to, to what's already been said, the, the footprint of the building is, it is what it is. It's, it's rudimentary. And it's, it's not exactly, exactly what we would want here because of the context of the homes. And I think that you have responded to that concern by applying and trying to break up the scale as best as you can. And that's sort of the hangup is, there's, and I'm reading the tea leaves here. I think everybody would be on board with this if it was two stories. I think that that is sort of the, the hangup. But we're also down the road with the GDP, SIP process. So we've already sort of committed to one aspect of this development. That's, that's me speaking. And I understand that you've got some economies that you have to deal with and that's what's driving this and you have stuff that's on your end. On our end, we look at it from the concept, context of the neighborhood and everything else. So I think that's what's giving us the greatest pause, is that internal dilemma that we have on our side as well. Where does that take us? I don't have that answer unless we vote on it, so.
We're gonna get to that point. I'm cautioning everybody to understand again, that, again, we have talked about this for how many? It's not years, but it's months, many months.
We were here, we were here last year, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, it's been a year. So everybody has spent a lot of time into it. And it's not an exceptional building. Some of those homes down there, I have not looked at those down there, but we've got to have some two and a half story homes down there. We have to.
We do.
And, and, and that, you know, also, we're looking at a rendering. I don't know how many trees we're gonna lose. You're gonna lose everything that's on the front. There's a lot of trees in this neighborhood that'll help to me soften a little bit.
So I appreciate the amount of work you've done. And as I said, I think you're close, but we're also gonna live with this building for a long time. And if you live in that neighborhood, you're gonna look at it every day. And all I'm saying is, I'm fine with the project. I've, I've looked at the height. It's challenging, but it, it works with the site. It's not ideal. I, I don't have a problem with that, but I just think there's a little more work that could be done. Particularly with the things I've mentioned. I mean, what material are the balconies? You've mentioned that's hardy plank?
It, it would be, yeah, hardy trim and wrapping.
And what material are the gables? Is that wood or is that hardy plank, wrapped in hardy plank as well?
That, that would be cedar.
That would be cedar.
Yeah.
So there is kind of your dilemma in terms of color matching? Or can you get or paint the hardy plank to match the color of the gables?
You know, the hardy, you could probably, you could get them close, but probably not quite the same.
Okay.
But you're, again, it's, I'm not a fan of close, but not quite. That kind of thing if we're trying to match, but it looks a little different. So again, that's, we pulled it apart a little bit more like Brian was saying, trying to get that little bit warmer accent at the entrances, the pergola.
They're not gonna age the same either. If one's natural wood and one's hardy plank, they're gonna look different ten years from now than they are day one.
So is any house that you built?
Right.
So.
So if you're trying to match them, it's gonna be a challenge.
That would be a much more of a challenge.
But they're ten years from now, they don't look the same.
Right, right. Gentlemen, I think we need to, you know, again, understand that we've all worked on this thing. We've gone down the road this far. My point is being that we need to, and Patrick, if you disagree with it, that's fine. But then I guess, well, and I shouldn't say I guess, I know. One of my points every, whenever time I sit in a meeting, whether it be here or professionally in other positions I was in, okay, you don't like it. What's your advice? What, what, what do you want to say? What, you know, you can just say, no, I don't like it, all right? What do you want? What would make you happy?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm comforted hearing, you know, you talked about, you know, the sills, the wrap around the windows. It's just not showing up in the rendering, so that popped out. I still think the trusses don't unify with the rest of the building, but I understand the argument that materials are gonna age differently. So, and then the siding, I don't, I don't know what to tell you there. I, that's just my feeling is that that verticality doesn't help you.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna see where this goes.
Yep.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the SIP or MSP South Main Street Senior Affordable Apartments at one sixty-nine, two oh-three, and two fifteen South Main Street. Applicant MSP Real Estate.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. No, it's fine. It's good we have this discussion.
About time we have some discussion.
Yes.
Well, if I would, if I knew that was a problem, I'd have jumped in earlier.
Well, I didn't have to vote, so that's good. Okay, move on to item F, review and possible approval of site plan revision, three fifty Braun Road. Applicant is Tractee. Anybody here discuss that? Besides Elise?
Brad up here. So Brad, you can come on up too in case there's questions. But let me get to that as well. We've done a couple of these site plan revisions for Tractee in the past. These are enclosures of the outdoor work areas. So materials matching kind of the exterior. I know he had a, the color palette and those color selections included. Apologies, this is a large item. And we, we've been in contact with the fire department over the last week and they're comfortable with sprinklering and other things that are existing within the structure. This is really to provide more of that weatherized work area for Tractee as their business continues to expand and, and want to have some more closed area. But if there's anything else, Brad, you wanted to just talk about activities going on in here or kind of the maybe timeline of getting this closed up, I would assume before winter if possible?
Excuse me, sure. So like Elise said, we've enclosed two other portions of this building already. So this one is really taking the last cover canopy that they have on the south side of the building and, and enclosing it so they can work inside there all year round. Right now, they work, they build their buildings, there are structures underneath it, but it's open to the elements. So it'll be conditioned just a little bit. It's currently sprinkled, so it's really just putting the, the three walls. So it'll be conditioned just a little bit, it's currently sprinkled, so it's really just putting the, the three walls around the, the blue square that's up on the screen.
Straightforward.
Seems pretty straightforward, yeah.
Any questions, anybody? Any questions? Need a motion to approve the site plan revision for three fifty Braun Road?
Move to approve?
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Eric? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries, thank you for waiting and being patient.
Thank you.
Item G, review and possible recommendation Village Board Certified Survey Map, one twenty-seven Dewey Street, applicant is Mark, prison? Crazy? Come on up, well, I, we can go ahead, you, mind you go ahead and tell us what you're doing.
Sure, so Mr. Krasan is purchasing some property from his neighbors to the north, on North Main Street, to extend his backyard area. So this is the, he's here on Dewey, this is the property on North Main. So extending the, the backyard area and then shortening the, the depth of that backyard for the North Main Street. So he'll be purchasing some property from his North Main Street neighbor, having some more area in his backyard. But we reviewed this with the engineer, they're comfortable with all the, the changes in the current version.
Everything's just fine.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions?
Is it fair to ask if you just want more yard, or if you have a construction project in mind down the road?
Just more yard. We've been there thirty-six years, and we've been using the backyard that we're gonna purchase, as well as the lot to the north. The neighbors that are based on Main Street never used their backyard, and the renters never did. So we got to use it tax-free all this time. When Lamazne's bought it, the spring moved in, they came back and we introduced each other, we talked to each other, and they said, where's your line? And they said, you only got like thirty feet from your house, or whatever, yep, I know. But we've enjoyed it all this time, and they said, would you like to buy it? They asked us, and talk about a god thing because we've always kind of wanted it, we just couldn't afford it when we were raising kids, so now we can.
Wonderful.
So it's a good thing.
Good, perfect.
Far as I'm concerned, anyway.
So we need a motion recommend the Village Board approval of certified survey map at one twenty-seven Brewery dot Dewey Street.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, thanks for making it. Any other new business? Okay, move on, Director of Community Development, status of development projects.
All right. So on the public side of things, we have concrete on Oak Street for the most part, but certainly everywhere that asphalt will have to be, we have concrete at this point. So we are looking at getting asphalt, from what I gather, in the next few days, so by early next week. The plan is to have at least the binder course of asphalt down, and then, then we are finally into the home stretch of this summer, which will be wonderful for literally everybody in this village. So we're very excited about that. Well, six is coming along quite quickly, actually, we do have some masonry up there, surprisingly, they really are moving along very, very fast. So we're keeping eyes on that because it does seem to change even week to week pretty substantially, but that is on schedule and, and on target. Well, three as well, I know that folks have noticed it, it does kind of seem to start and stop. I think we talked about it in an earlier meeting, it is going according to schedule as we get here into the fall. We'll actually be able to take the well down and finish up the last major part of that work, which is the well itself and pulling the pumps out and rehabbing those. So that should be complete by the end of the year. The wastewater treatment plant is moving on schedule, a little bit more back from and, and isolated from the public, so a little bit harder to see. But it is moving according to schedule, they do have that wet well for the new intake station in place, and they'll keep building that building up. One of the more notable things to keep on your guys' radar with that project is that we do have the Richards Road lift station portion of that project. We'll be replacing that, it's right on that northwest corner of Richards and North Main Street. There's kind of a tiny, somewhat frankly ugly brick building there right now, and we'll be removing that, putting in an entirely new lift station there. And then putting in, not replacing that building, but putting in kind of a, a smaller little structure there. So you guys will get some more information about this, we do have a C S M that we need to bring through, and we'll bring through a site plan as well, so that'll be coming to you guys here probably next, I believe next.
Is it a new wet well, or is it all new, or?
It's all new, yep, because of, so that lift station collects everything from that northern part of town, including Oak Hill. And so it's one of those pieces that has to be operational at all times, so we can't take it down and replace it in place.
Okay, so you're dropping a new wet well?
Correct.
New wet well, and then, how many pump, there's two pumps in there?
I believe there are two pumps now, and there will be three pumps to provide redundancy in the new design, so.
And that, then you'll be taking that particular station out of service, or are you gonna just keep it there?
No, so we'll fill up the wet well, the existing wet well, we'll fill it up with gravel and then paper, or concrete over the top of it, and then we'll have a, a generator out there and some shielding so that people don't have to look at said generator on that corner there. So like I said, we'll bring that in, and very interested to get comments on that aesthetic part of it, that's been something that we've allocated a chunk of money in that project for. Kind of talked around what would be some good ideas, and, and I think this commission, it'd have some probably better ideas than all of us engineers sitting in the room. So some more to come on that one. On a private development side, Greenview Preserve is moving along, Autumn Ridge Phase Three on three B on the southeast side of town, that is almost done. They're looking to get pavement down very, very quickly if they have not already gotten it down. So they're really moving on trying to get that dedicated over to the village before snow starts flying, so that we are the ones responsible for plowing out there. Highlands is slipped back a bit on schedule, I think as of right now, the current plan for them is next year on that, we're, we're working with them on that one. So that about sums up most of the major stuff we've got going on.
Just wanted to mention the, the former two forty-nine, two sixty-seven North Main Street, the old Methodist Church, the old new library site, the North Point development there. I believe they're wrapping up, we're definitely getting close, so I think lease up will probably start, I'm guessing, probably November, December-ish. That's the twenty-four units of, those are those family-sized townhomes, three-bedroom townhomes. So they will be restoring the, the village's park parcel whenever things paved, and they get all the construction equipment out there. So they've, they've kept clear of the trees and other things that have been fenced off during the construction, but it's looking really nice if you haven't been by there recently.
Good, good, thank you. Upcoming, Plan Commission meetings Thursday, November sixth, Thursday, December fourth. And I, wow, we're looking to two thousand twenty-six, okay, we'll see.
That's the positive attitude we like.
Are we gonna make it?
We'll see who's all gonna be here, I guess my point being, we'll see who's all gonna be here, we'll see that. Well, we haven't decided that yet. So, okay, move on, anything else for Plan Commission? Planning staff meeting agenda for September Thursday closed. No, no future items for the future meetings. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn, second? Oh, Scott, Utah. Okay, we have a motion, a second, any, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thanks folks, it was a nice meeting, thank you.